I will call the Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting to order on today, on Tuesday, June 10th at 8:30. We start our meeting with a pledge. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
A support?
No in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we do have a period for the public comment, and we do have someone who would like to come forth to be first. Good morning. He also has handouts, which I will pass down here.
I already signed in, so.
You like that microphone better.
Which one?
Either side.
We all, in my neighborhood, watched with interest the Committee as a whole meeting in April, April 15th, where a discussion was about having, had made about abandoning roads in the county to help save money to apply to other areas and minimize maintenance. And so a chart was put out, and was maybe characterized as low-hanging fruit, but many of those roads were in Hovland, and one of them is the road that we access, all of our properties. So we live on Stone Gate, and we're in a private, I guess you'd call us a subdivision, that's the end of the county Stone Gate Road that's maintained. So I put it together, I think Ginny handed them out, fun facts about our neighborhood. As you remember in your chart, you had shown that there were 75 cars, and I'm not sure if that was a weekly average or daily average, but far exceeded any of the other roads that would be looking at, that were classified as driveways. And that's because there's a lot of houses down there. And so the fun facts are that there's 21 lots and 33 property owners down in our private section. I think the first houses were built around 1990, so over 30 years, 35 years, we've been accessing through that. And again, it is a dead-end road, once we enter our neighborhood. 15 lots assigned, fire numbers and completed homes, 11 all-season homes intermittently occupied. So we don't have what you might call seasonal residents that don't have heat and capability to be in their homes year-round. And our residents use their homes year-round. I called it all-season because, like many places, instead of four-season, we have a fifth called mud-season. So that's a part of what we live with up here. And then there's eight of us residents that are year-round in four homesteads. And I just really wanted to, we know that we're not on the agenda yet, and this is an early discussion, but there is some unique circumstances to us accessing our property and the guarantee of that area being plowed for us to access the almost a mile of road and the homes that are down that road to provide emergency access. Many of us are retired people, and so we have volunteers in the fire department, so that it's important that people can get in and out of there year-round. So I just really wanted to bring attention, and you see the little yellow spots is all those houses that all those cars drive up and down the road to. And although we live there full-time, there's many cars going down the houses that you just see once a month or once every couple of months, so you don't actually know everybody in the neighborhood. But it is a well-used neighborhood and well-used road. The portion of Stone Gate that the county is maintaining is much shorter, and there's fewer residents that are built up on that. So it might appear like it's a driveway, but really is a main arterial access to all of our property. So we want, and we have several members of my community here, to keep that front of mind as the decision-making process goes on. And as Commissioner Gamble had mentioned during the meeting on the Committee as a whole, that residents are going to want to know how this selection of Tier One and Tier Two roads are made. And I think everybody can look around and find roads that aren't on that list, that are short, would have a few houses that are county roads. And why them and not us, or why us and not them, will be a question that people ask. So I just want you to keep that in your mind as you're going through a process to looking at abandoning roads. That's all I have. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any public comment? Okay, thank you. For the Commissioners, any public comment for you folks?
No.
I'll close the public comment now at this time. Moving on to the consent agenda items, we have claims. The minutes from May 27th, the approval of Jesse Johnson to environmental health officer and the Curling Club lease for 25, 26. Would anyone want to pull anything? Commissioner Gamble?
Madam Chair, I don't wish to pull anything. I had answers earlier, but I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Support? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Now we have a YMCA update with Administrator Rogers. Good morning.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to be joined this morning by Alex, the Director at the Y. And he's put together a presentation about current services and budget and just a real, a current view of the Y. This came about last month, when we had a discussion about a custodial contract, and a couple of you, several of you, asked for current information about the Y. So Alex is going to do the first part, and then I'm going to talk a little bit about what the county actually has in their budget for this. This is meant to be informational, there's no decision being made today, but I just think it helps give us a current view of what the Y is providing to our community and, you know, what that costs us and gives us a better way to think about it, I think. So go for it, Alex.
Thank you very much for having me today. Took me, I think I spent more time than I thought I was going to on this presentation because I wanted to dig a little deeper for the Commissioners and Board here, so. Just, I wanted to, a part of this is kind of an educational piece as well, just so you all know how memberships in the Y, and it's a very, it's a very interconnected system, and I wanted to make sure that you all kind of knew how it works. So on our screen here, we have 1,549 members, 1,026 units. So that includes, a unit would be a family membership or, you know, a two-adult membership. So it's broken down into units and members. A third of our units are Silver Sneakers, Silver and Fit, Renew Active. And so those are insurance-based, insurance-based memberships. So they get a free membership, and the YMCA gets reimbursed every time that they check into the Y. The contracts with those insurance companies are different among every association, and we do not even receive half of the membership cost when getting those reimbursements. And that's if the members decide to check in, you know, the allotted amount of times in that month. So just so you know, the, the average that people check in is around six to 10. So it's not even the full amount, which is typically 12 in a month, so. One in 10 memberships with our, with the Cook County branch is on some sort of financial assistance. And I'll talk more about financial assistance later on in the slides. We gave out 34,000 in those scholarships and those financial assistance, and all of that is from fundraising. We do have the $500 from Heritage Foundation, which, when someone passes away, they can write the Y into their will, so. And I wanted to put the penetration rate in there. It is 27% for the county, which is, I haven't found a Y that's, has a higher percentage yet. I've been doing a lot of digging in that area, so. Our membership report, I found this super interesting. A third of our members are the Renew Active, the Silver Sneakers, the Silver and Fit. But by far, the majority of check-ins is our two-family, two-adult family memberships, which I thought spoke volumes to what the Y is able to provide for the community. Our usage report for our, we call them discount groups, but they are our, the financial assistance memberships. So you can see the 50, 60, 40%, those higher percentages are utilizing the YMCA more than the folks in the 10, 20%, meaning that I can assume that they want to use the Y, they're using the financial assistance that we're giving them, and they're benefiting from being active and being in a safe space. The outlier, I will point out, is the 70%. And when I look at that, I think it might be, there might be another barrier of access, whether that's transportation or something else to get them into the doors, because it's the only outlier in that higher percentage for financial assistance. This is, this is just a, our typical membership report. We had 26,000 check-ins within the last six months now, and then 1,200 of unique check-ins, meaning that because we have that, we have that 15, around 1,500 members, around 300 of them are not utilizing the memberships. And I'm going to assume that it is the Silver and Fit and Renew Active, because it is that free membership, they're not, they're not paying for it.
Guilty as charged.
We do have our visitor report. I have been using, I've been collecting zip codes and using that and mapping out where people are coming from. As you can see, it's heavily populated in the metro, so we are serving those, the tourists. But we also see a high number on Fridays. You can see on that bottom graph, the, the big bumps, those are going to be Fridays, and we do a free local Friday. And so people are utilizing the Y even when they're not members, so they're still getting So the Y is more than a gym, more than a gym and swim. We provide childcare. So in our early learning, we have an infant room, a toddler room, and a preschool room. And we do, we've served 40 children, or 40 individual children, excuse me, in the 2024, 2025 kind of school year, okay? After-school care, we do provide. You can see 25 individual youth served this past school year, which is a small increase from the year before. Summer day camp, we served 79 individual youth served last summer, and we're still having people register for this summer, so I didn't pull those numbers yet. But a part of the piece that I wanted to also put in there is, if you've been by the Y, you've seen the construction happening right now, we're very excited. We got a couple of grants, IRRB, Deed, and Lloyd K. Johnson, we're putting in a playground right now and making some capital improvements to the area. We also did some capital improvements in our childcare bathrooms. That was through an IRRB grant. I apologize, I thought I had that in there. It was a $30,000 project. And what is the Y doing, other than, other than childcare and being that gym and swim, right? We provide a free snack program. We have done 27, we did 27,000 individual free snacks in 2024. Yes, I tracked them. I have a little spreadsheet. We provide access for youth currently. We are providing 14 free youth memberships for a year, and I'm working closely with Sarah Lakowski over at the school, so that it's targeted, and then the people that are using it, they would benefit greatly from usage of the Y. Tourist economy, right? That is what Cook County is, and we have outfitters. We just certified 75 lifeguards last week and the week before to provide for the outfitters here in Cook County. There was, it was four days of pool time, but it's very much worth it for some of those outfitters in the area. Collaboration with local organizations, like Education Day, working with our schools, they, they use our gymnasium, whether that's for sports, or it's a negative 20-degree day and they need to be inside, and their gym space is full, we'll bring them into our gym. Pickleball, I think I have to point out pickleball. But it's keeping people active, it's keeping members engaged, it's keeping the community engaged. Most of those members are going to be our Silver, Fit, and Renew Active members, but we do provide them with some gym space even in the summertime, so. And then I wanted to point out one project that we're doing right now. It's our Cook to Camp project. We're going to fill a bus of kids and send them to camp, YMCA Camp Miller down in Sturgeon Lake. And it'll be a Cook County-only week. And so the idea was to bring these kids from West End and Grand Portage and Grand Marais and bring them together into one week. I'm happy to say that we have filled the bus, and now I'm just waiting on a few grants to come in right now, so. And fundraising is going well. Swimming lessons is a big one, at least for me. It's very important to me, I have an aquatics background, and I know how important swimming lessons is. It literally saves lives. So our session-based swimming lessons, those are going to be the normal, I'm going to pay for a session and go, you know, once a week for six weeks. Our grant-funded swimming lessons are, can be built in any way that we need to, and so we were flexible. We have worked with Ashki and Sawtooth the last two years, and then GES was new this year, and we were able to serve them as well. The two, Ashki and GES, those were grant-funded swimming lessons. Sawtooth was meant to be a grant-funded swimming lessons. We did not receive the full grant amount, we just did it anyway. I got in the pool with the kids and we taught the swimming lessons. Staffing, I just wanted to give this number to you all. We do have 58 staff, eight are full-time, three are in our childcare area. We have 14 aquatic staff, whether that's lifeguard, swimming lessons, swim team, four part-time childcare staff, eight youth development staff, and that's going to be after-school care, summer day camp, parents' night out, 18 healthy living, that's going to be group exercise and personal training, and then of course, and then six membership staff. These are, this is just a slide of the grants that have been awarded in the past two years. And I should say, the Ann Bancroft grants are not grants directed to the Y, it is grants directed to individuals. We did have four individuals receive the Ann Bancroft grant, and then I helped facilitate the, I helped them get their money, basically, from, from Ann Bancroft. I do have an operating budget attached. It is in the, the meeting notes for your review. And I wanted to give a quick background breakdown of the Y. I thought it was important to give, to give this. So there's YUSA, right? This is the governing body. They make the rules of what you, what we need to do to have the Y name. And then there's individual YMCA associations. You can have an individual branch as the association, or you can have the metro, right? The YMCA of the north. I say we're YMCA of the more north, but the individual YMCA's, they might have X number of branches, right? And then on the side, we have our mid-sized branches, and that's going to be three or more. The Duluth Area Family YMCA is a mid-sized YMCA. When we look at a branch, it's going to be different, our branch, it's going to be different than the Duluth branch, and it's going to be a lot different than the Hermantown branch, okay? When we look at branches in the metro, they're going to be completely different. Now, I was asked to dig a little bit and find some comparables. I have yet to find a comparable. I did find a YMCA that is serving a population of 14,000, but that was the closest that I could find, and that is the county, their city is 2,000, it's in Wisconsin. And I actually met with their executive director yesterday to kind of pick his brain and see what was happening. They opened up two months ago, so we're going to see how it goes. And I wanted to include our 2030 vision. I think the one that myself and a lot of our staff are most excited about is the name change. We have a service area larger than Connecticut, the Duluth Area Family YMCA does. And so we serve more than just the Duluth area. We serve all the way up to Cook County, all the way down to Sturgeon Lake, and now we're bleeding into Wisconsin with a merger agreement with Superior of Wisconsin. So we are very excited to have an identity that represents us a little bit better. Of course, we'll still be the Cook County Community YMCA. And then our future hopes. The Y is here to serve the community. I'm here to, to serve the community, I'm here to help within the county, and the opportunities that I would like to have in the future is facility decisions as far as maintenance and things like that. We're already working on this, the beautification of our outside project, we are working with soil and water, and, and we've got our playground going now. I would like to see some appropriate cardio room flooring. The current flooring is linoleum tile, and it could be dangerous if there was water on it, right, slip and fall. A traditional gym flooring is going to be a lot more safer. And then some specialized equipment to increase access. So we do currently have a new step and an octane-seated elliptical, both of which are non-functional at the moment. And so we would like to, I would like to see that, and that is an access issue that we would like to fix, so. Perfect. Any questions?
Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Could you tell us a little bit about yourself? How long have you been here?
Yeah. I moved, I've been with a YMCA for 10 years. I started at the La Crosse Area Family YMCA. I interned at the Duluth Area Family YMCA, moved down to the cities, and then in 2019, I moved back up to Duluth to work at the YMCA there. I had left, actually, for about a year, and then came back, and they asked me to come up to be an interim director. I said sure, and the 60 days has turned into a little over a year now. I like it a lot up here, so, yeah.
Good. Well, appreciate your great report here. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Alex. I can't speak for the period when I wasn't a Commissioner, but I can speak for the period when I was Commissioner, which was the beginning of the Y. And so if, if this statement is incorrect, I can, I stand to be corrected, but I appreciate the thorough presentation. And in my experience and awareness, it's the most thorough presentation that, that we have had made. And I think that information is beneficial, both from the marketing standpoint and from the standpoint of stewardship, that to be able to represent things so that people can see the benefit, the return on their tax dollar investment. When you look at the financials and you see the amount of monies that are spent in the operation of the Y, nearly a million, and then you look at what the facility portion is relative to the city's contribution and the county's contribution, we're talking close to 1.4, at least 1.3, you know, some million dollars for the operation. To see how that is spent and to look at it from the standpoint of the benefit to this community, and asking for the comparables, it is looking at seeing, we can be unique in what we're providing, which we can celebrate those, those good things if people see the value to it. If we see how we operate in comparison with the other Y's on the financial side as, as well as the, you know, provision of opportunities, be it swimming lessons, be it for seniors, all these different things. Those are important stories to tell. I would like to see, when it comes to the grants, I mean, just the simple overview, it would be interesting to see of the total amount of monies that are, the 900-some thousand that are in your budget, what percent is generated through operations, and what percent is generated through gifts, grants, and things like that. On the front end, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, people that get behind the Y, and a lot of their funding comes from people that come alongside and say, hey, I'd like to contribute. And yesterday in our extension meeting, University of Minnesota, there was a statistical presentation on just how much wealth exists in the population that is leaving us. What I mean by that is not because they're moving elsewhere, but they're passing on. And a part of that is telling the story so those people will invest those dollars in something that will carry on a legacy that they believe is important to them. And so organizations have been told that for many years now, that in order to survive in our highly expensive culture, we need to set up programs that are gaining those dollars that people share their wealth with us because they believe in what we do. So that's why storytelling is important. I want to be sure that I'm clear on something you said earlier about the people that receive a benefit because of their health insurance. So when they come in, there's a requirement that they have to attend so many times in order to qualify for that? And so let's just say that if it's 12 times in a month, that if they show up eight, nine, that you are not reimbursed, you're only reimbursed if, in fact, they meet the 12 requirement?
Oh, no, thank you for clarifying. No, so the, we still get, we get reimbursed per visit, it's just the 12 maxes out, so we don't, if they come 13 times, we don't get paid for that 13th time.
Okay, so it's reimbursed up to the 12 times?
Correct.
And is it, and it's not reimbursed at, at full?
No.
Amount? It's sort of like Medicare, Medicaid?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right. Well, again, I appreciate the report, and I appreciate their responsiveness to the asks.
Yeah.
I think in cultivating healthy relationships, the more we can see the transparency and work with the Y, given our relationship, the better, that it will be, both in how we operate as well as how we communicate to the community, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you. One of the things I just want to express is how it's been so exciting to see the Y change and grow. is how it's been so exciting to see the Y change and grow. Prior to the Y being built, I remember being in conversations as part of the school community at that point about the need for a safe space for students after school and also looking at the Minnesota Student Survey and the results of that survey, looking at drug and alcohol use and seeing the Y as one of the tools to intervene and change the results of that survey. And it's just exciting to see the childcare, the free snack program, lifeguard certification for our outfitters and resorts, filling a huge need, adding jobs to our community. And lastly, I'm really pleased with the swimming lessons being added for Oshkna Ogamog up in Grand Portage as well as GES. So I just want to commend you and thank you for an excellent report.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I would just briefly like to go through, you know, just for the public's benefit and the commissioners as well, what the county is actually spending to maintain this building. So first of all, I'd like to apologize somehow when we scanned it into the agenda. We have formatting errors, so we'll get that updated. But this is in two parts, and I've handed out to the commissioners today. It's just the overall budget from 2024. So this is complete for last year and then what we spent so far in 2025. And then the additional pages show every single expenditure that add up to those amounts. So I'm just going to walk through it really quickly. But first, I'll give the high numbers. So there is a contribution from the city. And last year, that was $118,680. And then overall, the operations of the Y, the expenditures were $324,949. So when you take away the actual expenses and what the county actually contributed last year was $206,269, which was about $85,000 under budget from what had been budgeted. So just kind of looking down there a little bit, we have the contribution from the city. Under Personnel Services, this is when our staff goes over there to do maintenance of some sort, fix the pool, do something that they're doing, you know, change filters and the HVAC system. So this is money that's paid back to our staff to perform those services, including their salaries and their FICA and PERA and Medicare, all that kind of stuff, their taxes. So that's the first several lines. The utilities, you'll see that in two different payments, to the city's PUC and to the school. And this is because when the building was added on to the school, it shares an HVAC system. And so there's reimbursement by square footage back to the school. And then there's also the PUC is the electrical part, I think, on the... I don't know what that... I don't know how it breaks out, but that's the two things. Propane is the school and the electrical stuff is back to the city. I guess that's the way that works. And then, you know, and just a kind of reminder, if that seems high, it's $114,000 a year. That's heating that whole building, but it's also heating a pool in that auditorium space. So that comes with a cost. Let's see. Under Professional Contracts Services, this is mostly our cleaning, like the contract you approved the other day. So that was last year, $105,000, I believe. And we're going to get a little bit less than that. But it's other kinds of things like, you know, the pest control and that was CRBP. We had a contract with them to monitor our HVAC systems for a while just to make sure that they were working correctly because we'd had a problem with that that led to a lot of other costs. Brooke tells me that particular contract is going to go away. He's monitoring that now. Repairs and maintenance, it's just going to be, you know, you've got a plumbing issue, electric issue, whatever, a pool issue. So those are just costs as things come up. Like a big one on there is Aqualogic. We had a pool here go out, so $22,000 for that. And so that's why we budget that money for there. Just basic insurance, which we know what it is. And then other supplies and small equipment, that's probably the most things you see. And that is basically some parts for the pool, but mostly it's cleaning supplies and, you know, paper products and stuff like that. So it's a variety of things, but it's a lot of it. So that's basically what we have there. And I think my assumption was, when I started this task with Alex, is I thought it was a lot more than that. So I was surprised at, you know, what amount we actually were claiming there for utilities and all of the upkeep of that building. It's actually significantly less than I thought it was going to be. So just wanted to share that with you, make sure that everybody was really clear on what we are actually spending.
It's kind of calmed down. Some of the first years were higher because of the... After construction, there were a lot of fixes that happened in those budgets. But in the last years, it's kind of stabilized, so.
And I would also just like to say that it's a real pleasure to work with somebody like Alex. He's a really good partner, so.
Mr. Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I think in our meetings, Alex, that just reinforcing the fact that leadership makes a huge difference. And we certainly, as a board, understand that. And we're in the midst of looking for new leadership. Not that we're trying to dispense with Rena, but we...
Please, please.
Yeah. It makes a big difference. And the receptivity and the acknowledging the importance of being responsive is hugely important. I think the volunteer hours showing and reflecting that is an important element, too. And when we have requests for taxpayer dollars for entities that were not responsible to have to fund, for me at least, I've always wanted to see how much skin do you have in the game, so to speak? And that means that if it matters to you and you demonstrate that by your resourcefulness and what you invest in the organization, then taxpayers are more likely to come alongside because they see you work hard for what you're trying to provide by way of benefit to our community. Something that in your comparable study, when you look at just the operating expenses, $965,000. When I look at the portion that is wages and contract services and benefits and all of those things, that amount is $696,000, which is 72% of your budget. So when looking at what our cost is in staffing and you make your comparables, you can see that 72% when you're looking at, are we doing better? Are we doing... Is it costing us more from the standpoint of our budget relative to our staffing costs? And I know in my experience in the budgeting process as an executive director that I would use comparables for three or four different sources that would hold me accountable because at budget meetings and annual meetings and before the board, they could look and see how we compared on various expense areas. And it either helped me to improve what I was doing, to try to reduce those number to an industry standard, or we could celebrate what we are doing because we're resourceful and mindful. So, yeah, anything that makes it palatable for us to be able to understand the figures and what goes on over there is beneficial. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just want to thank Alex. It's been a pleasure working with him. Really lucky that we have him in the community and really excited for the future and any further visions you can provide. And sitting on the Duluth Board, I just want to share that they are very interested in supporting community as much as they can. And so if there's any other partnerships or any other angles or needs that we can think of, it's worthwhile to bring those forward to them. For example, in Duluth, there's all kinds of housing initiatives and partnerships with the city of Herman Town, really addressing, trying to make downtown a safer place and then just in the region. Alex didn't mention, but up on the range, there was a YMCA that failed. And now the Duluth Y is in there trying to provide services that were previously covered from that Y. They're not officially in that region, but still want to provide those services for children and for families. So and then again, that Superior merger is a really big deal. And there was a lot of anxiety. And I think there still is some anxiety about it just because of the scope of it. But just that communication and that collaboration has been really powerful. And I haven't been, you know, directly involved in kind of that executive committee as far as working that out. But I have been able to meet with the Superior representatives and talked through that and talked through their anxieties and fears and then seen how that communication and those relationships can really build confidence and really expand their vision and hope for what's possible. So all around, it's a really good thing. Certainly, there are costs. And certainly, we can always find ways to improve. But I'm just really grateful for the work that you do, Alex, here.
Thank you.
It's great to have a wider perspective because we're the end of the road up here. And so it's great that Commissioner Mills is involved in more of a regional committee, too, and give us a broader perspective. So I appreciate that, Commissioner Mills. Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Childcare. We've identified housing. We've identified and talked about childcare many times. And it may be in the interest of time, isn't a discussion to have now, but it would be interesting to know, given the lip service that we give to trying to encourage and attract young families or have young families stay here, that childcare, aside from housing, is another issue that we face. And if the Y is meeting that need, what the challenges that it poses for the YMCA to be able to meet that need at the extent that it exists. So my question would be, and again, it can be something discussed, but if we have this need, how well is that need being met by the Y? And how is providing that service being managed from your perspective as to being doable?
Well, I think it would come down to staffing. Our infant room is full. Our toddler room is full. And our preschool room is at seven out of 10. And I kind of chalk those three up to the school has a preschool as well, so. It would come down to staffing and can I find a... It's easy to... I think it's easy to say, oh, well, this person that just graduated or whatever can come and teach. But, you know, we want to have some sort of quality teacher in our childcare. I think every parent wants that as well. So I think it's just staffing. I think that we are doing what we can, and I think we're doing it pretty well. We actually just got our rating back from ParentAware, and we're another four stars, which is the highest we can get, so, yeah.
As a community, when we have that discussion, it's a matter of saying, well, here's the need and how well is the need being met and who is meeting that need? So when we have that, then we can understand the challenges it poses for you and we can look at and say, you know, this is how we can meet that need. But it is something that is a provision that you alluded to, and it just, because we talk about it and we have people saying we need childcare, it's how do we find... How do we solve that issue? And if the Y is a big part of that, so, thank you.
In regards to childcare, I will be meeting this Thursday afternoon. I represent the Cook County Public Health Committee. And those are the things we talk about constantly. Teacher salaries, getting people there who have the educational background, supporting them on that. And then just a wider discussion will be on Thursday. So I'll report on that next week. Anything else for Alex? Commissioner White?
Perhaps you and I will have conversation someday.
That'd be wonderful.
Because now I know what you look like.
He's the incognito.
No, he's...
You'll see him everywhere.
I think if you just walk into the Y.
Now he just keep popping up all the time.
Yeah, exactly. That's how it works.
No, you reached out two weeks ago or so.
Yeah.
And obviously, you were at the top of my list, so, anyway. I'm in town today.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, well, appreciate so much working with Rena to put all this together and have a broader perspective on our Y for now and the future.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Alex.
So we'll move on to item five with the Highway Department, talking about jurisdiction changes.
Good morning. Let's see. First thing we have, yes, jurisdiction change. So I just want to make this very clear. This isn't anything official official yet. So we can still put the brakes on it if that is the end result of what we want, what this is. And I appreciate Commissioner Sullivan, too, working with the Forest Service and a couple of people there. It was identified that, you know, they would like basically a letter of support from the board for this change. So as you all are aware, we've been talking about this probably more seriously over the last year or so, the last couple of committee of the whole meetings with these particular roads. But honestly, we've been talking about this as a county for, God, decades at this point. So it's kind of nice to be getting to a point like this, I think. I think when something gets talked about that long, you can, I mean, it's kind of self-explanatory on why it's important at that point. So what this is, is just resolution of support for Cook County, the change in jurisdiction over those three roads. So it's the grade from Ball... Or not Ball Club, I'm sorry. Yeah, from Ball Club over to Sawbill Trail, Onion River Road, and then North Pike Lake Road. So is there any questions I can answer about this?
Questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Forest Service roads, just like we take a look at roads and try to find out where our dollars are best invested based upon usage and whatever. And the Forest Service is trying to get out of a lot of responsibility relative to roads. And it was affecting some of the usage that we were having up here, both recreational and practical application. And so we see in other areas of governance where a certain jurisdiction held by a certain government agency is basically no longer taking that responsibility, which passes it on. And so when we look at these things, my question is, is how much are we holding those entities accountable? Similar to our public comment where we're saying, are we looking at this? What criteria are we using to make that determination? And if we pick up responsibility, which then puts, you know, pressure on the levy, are we letting the federal side of things off the hook? And of course, they're where they're at. I guess my question is very simply is that if we're saying we will take responsibility, which normally was something that was handled by the Forest Service, is do we see this as a slippery slope? Or is it not in that context?
The slippery slope analogy is a fun one, right? Because at the end of the day, we all can stop it very quickly. We don't have to do this. And then to stick with, I guess, that analogy a little bit, all three of these roads, we're already doing work on. And so that's the other part. We already plow the grade. That is a long stretch of road. To me, that's one of our largest maintenance activities where, you know, plowing for, what, seven months of the year? Realistically, that's our biggest effort. So we're already doing that. We're already doing a lot of those, replacing culverts, grading roads on these roads. Or on North Pike Lake, at least. Onion River will salt a little bit, salt sand if it's needed. But, no, it is a good point. It's a conversation that's come up. You know, Forest Service roads, DNR roads as well, you can lump in. Really, you know, the purpose of those roads is for those entities to get in to do their thing. They don't care if people live on them. And so that's the difference. There's not any official cutoff point that says, well, now there's five people that live on this road. It's no longer Forest Service. It's county. It's not how it works. that live on this road, it's no longer Forest Service, it's county, it's not how it works. So, it just kind of lingers, then. So, you can look at some of these and say, sure, at one point in time, let's use an example of Irish Creek Road, and that's a DNR road right now, right? At one point in time, I'm assuming, not a lot of people lived there. Now, a lot of people live there. It's probably one of the more denser roads in the county, denser populations of area. I think we've all heard the statistic, it's the, what is it, the highest concentration of publicly available land, or privately, however you say it, privately available land in the county, like, that's the development area. But it's all facilitated by DNR roads. So, what is the responsibility, then, of us as an entity that can provide service like this? We are a road maintenance department, that's what we do, is serve people like that. And so, you know, versus, kind of to your point, you know, what is the responsibility of the DNR and the Forest Service to maintain their roads for people to access? And so, you know, that gets into a conversation, too, on their own internal policies on it. And, you know, like I started this with, for them, as long as it serves their use, then they're meeting whatever standard they need to meet. And so, that's where we end up in conversations like this, where you have, you know, maybe the grade at one point in time was just a trail, but now it's grown to something more that we rely on here, so now you're looking at that as, okay, should we make this change? And now the county is responsible for it. Did that answer your question?
Yeah, it helps to understand, as a follow-up, Madam Chair, the criteria, when it look, when we look at which roads are going to get our attention, when it comes to repaving, regrading, whatever, we can measure that, we can measure surface and composition, whatever. When it comes to having a disciplined matrix that applies to how we evaluate which roads we're considering to, you know, take on or to no longer be responsible for, if we have an informed criteria that lets us know, this is why we're looking at this, then that uniform inspection, so to speak, is something that the public is aware of when they look at where they're at. And so, it would be good at some point to inform the Board as well as the public, this is how we look at it. And I think, in our experience and our discussions, that the flexibility and the responsiveness that you've demonstrated in that discussion, it's not a fixed, it's just being a steward of what you're entrusted with, and then we have discussions. But knowing the matrix that is applied when we make that evaluation would be helpful.
Things like, you know, what comes to mind, for example, is, you know, roads that serve a lot of people, you know, that's a good candidate. Roads that provide redundancy, and so, you know, the grade, I think, is the prime example of that. You have a road that we rely on, you know, if Highway 61, for example, we bring that up, washes out, you know, we're kind of hosed, it's the grade, it's Murmur Creek Road, we could have this conversation about Murmur Creek Road as well, another Forest Service road. You know, it's stuff like that, traffic counts, you know, we've touched on some of that. And so, I think there's gives and takes with each of those things. You know, you could look at Trout Lake Road is another example, where maybe there's not a ton of traffic, but the redundancy that it provides. A fun one to think about is Shoe Lake Road to Greenwood Lake Road, way up there. Bet you that's not a lot of traffic, but the redundancy is something that I think is vital to have in any road system, so, yeah, good points. And it's things that we're still, you know, as we're working through this, developing, you know, like you said, you got to be flexible with this stuff.
Yeah.
I especially appreciate, most of these areas in my district, and Onion River Road has been constant discussion, who does it privately, whatever. Also, you know, the grade is evacuation, in case we have something that happens on Highway 61. But my question would be, over to Sawbill Trail, but then what happens beyond Sawbill Trail?
Well, then you get to the Sawbill, and you can take that down to 61. So, that was just the first part. I think most of the work the Forest Service done, and that's another part of this, as we talk about changing jurisdictions, is the Forest Service has spent a lot of money over the last, I think, just in the last 10 years, fixing up that road and making it. So, it's, you know, here's kind of a nice, we'll call it "brand-new" thing in quotes, that they can hand over then for us to start with. We're not starting with a trail, we're starting with a well-built, well-maintained road that, you know, as we touched on in the Committee of the Whole, all the culverts are brand-new, the bridges are in fine shape, except one of them. There's, you know, they rebuilt it, and so I think that's part of, a big part of that conversation, especially as we talk to other roads in the future, is say, well, if the entity that's turning it over wants to sink the money into fixing it, to get it to a standard that we find acceptable, to me, that's a far more palatable conversation than, please take over this trail in the woods, now fix it. Like, I'm not on board with that, so, yeah.
Commissioner Sullivan?
I was just going to say, from an emergency management standpoint, that redundancy is really critical, and for me, the grade is just the highest priority, because if we have 61 washout like we've experienced and potentially significantly worse with some of the major rainfall events we're getting, that's our lifeline. And so, I am in particular, really interested in that issue of redundancy and getting that for our community.
Any other comments, questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think the important thing is just that there is a defined procedure, policy. I am attending a NACO budgeting workshop for five weeks, and it's pretty amazing, the discipline that is built into process. And so, my point is, is that I think to the public, it is demonstrating that there is discipline that informs our decisions, and nothing is less to the subjective. It doesn't mean that the discipline that we put in place can't be discussed, but we do have parameters that inform our decisions as to why we do what we do.
Those are good points, and, you know, I think that, again, the important thing with these ones in particular, to really nail home, is we're doing a lot of the work already. And, you know what I mean? And so, for us, you know, the extra lift of maintenance on these roads isn't much, whereas if now we start talking about roads that we're not doing anything on, and now we have to add that in, that goes into the conversation we've had about adding, you know, adding staff, basically, because we know what our level of service is right now. And so, if we start, and that's including these roads already, now we start adding new things, and that's where you start talking about, okay, that level of service is going to start going down, you know, especially, as you can imagine, during snow events. You know, then we start talking about, well, do we develop, you know, Matt and I have had conversations about, you know, a potential, like, tiered system with our roads, where maybe we really make a point to hit the main ones, whatever we define that as, as, you know, day one, and then maybe day two or three is kind of some of these side roads. But I would like to not get to that point. I think, you know, right now, I believe we can plow out the whole county in about a day, maybe some cleanup on day two, and I like that, that's fine, that's perfect. I don't want to make it better, I don't want to make it worse, I think that's perfect for us. So, yeah, but all good points.
Continue.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve support of jurisdiction change over the grade, Onion River Road, and North Pike Lake Road.
I'll support. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner?
Just want, for the public's clarification, for those that are listening, in the roads that will be, that may be vacated over time, how soon will that happen?
So, that's a bigger conversation. So, that's kind of the second part of this two-part. We know, we talk about adding in this case, and then we've also had conversations about subtracting, like we heard in public comment, and I appreciate everybody coming today to talk about that, and I've had a chance to talk to different folks about kind of the vacations. So, right now, it's a little, what do I want to say, cart in front of the horse, a little bit. You know, we did our best to get this out in front of everybody as we're developing it, and so that can kind of create its own problems. And I think, I think a good way to look at it, and you heard it already, is why this road and not another one? And so, if I don't have a good reason for that, we, that's still, that's part of this process of developing. So, nothing has been decided on road vacations at this point in time. What that was, was just a list that we developed. I don't want, you know, kind of sort off the top of our heads, running through where we provide maintenance, and just trying to see, hey, are there some that, you know, make sense or don't make sense to keep? And so, I think what we're, we've been working with a law firm to help, you know, that kind of lives and breathes Minnesota statutes when it comes to this stuff, because, you know, a lot of the comments we've heard, and even today, is, you know, concerns about access, easements, and how does that work? So, anything we do, we obviously have to work within Minnesota statutes, we're not just gonna, you know, we can't just willy-nilly do things. So, there are statutes we do have to work within, we can't just abandon a road, it's not how it works. We're obligated in certain circumstances to provide some level of maintenance, and so in some cases, you could see roads get turned into minimum maintenance roads. And so, that's where a less, lesser standard of maintenance can occur on those, we can, legally, we can do that. It doesn't matter if 50 people live at the end of the road, or no people live at the end of the road, we can designate roads as minimum maintenance as we see fit. Besides that, homeowners do, and property owners have the option to petition to take over a road, much like, kind of like what we're doing with the Forest Service a little bit, where if everybody agrees that they can grant an easement, and everybody can have access, that road then would transfer and become private. And so, what we're working on right now is finalizing what that process looks like, we'll talk about it later this month at our Highway Advisory Committee. Then my goal was to bring it back for, let's see, a July Committee of the Whole, finish that conversation, hopefully have a little more of a refined list there, because, like we've talked about, flexibility is important with this, and we got to have good metrics in place. As I've talked to people on the phone, you know, I want to have a brush stroke, we can apply to everything, and not just, you know, we don't want to do things kind of ad hoc, we want to say, here's the policy, here's why we do this. And then, so, July Committee of the Whole, you know, we'll talk more about that. And then maybe in August, maybe, if things get figured out, we could potentially see, you know, maybe one of the first ones, like, one road vacation come down. We also want to take this very slowly, one thing at a time, and give people an opportunity to comment and make sure they understand what's going on. So, I think what you'll see is, instead of a batch, it'll probably just be one, one at a time type of thing. So, but we got to work within the law is the most important thing, so.
Okay, thank you on that. We'll look forward to lots of future discussions.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. We'll move on to authorization to purchase a motor grader.
Yeah, so, good morning, Commissioners. I really look forward to coming before you to talk about scheduled replacements. I don't look forward to coming to talk to you about unscheduled replacements. And so, this is one of our first unscheduled replacements I've had to come talk about. Unfortunately, we have, so we have four motor graders that take care of, you know, the 200-plus miles of gravel roads that we maintain in the county, that is a high percentage of roads that are gravel, as compared with other counties. So, we do have a, kind of a, an intense grader load, I would call it, on our road system. And we don't have redundancies, we have four graders, you can kind of think of them as dividing the county up into four, and they take care of their sections. So, we don't have a fifth grader, so that means when one grader goes down, it's, you know, the other graders sometimes can, can't cover for that fourth grader that goes down, or we get a rental. And renting a grader is about $11,000 a month. So, that, that sort of necessitates fairly quick action on our part. The good, the good news is that any rental can go towards the purchase of a new grader. So, currently, we are renting the grader that's, that we're coming to you to hopefully purchase. Graders currently are on a 12-year replacement cycle, and the grader in question is at 10 years, which is really unfortunate, because we were so close. And I don't know if everybody had a chance to see what the repair estimate on this, the grader is, it's, even, we're used to big numbers at the Highway Department, and this one took us back. We had to read and reread it, but it's $100,000 in repairs. And it's essentially, that's just to kind of open it up and start replacing parts, we don't actually know what the, what the final bill would be. So, if anybody has any questions, happy to address those. I think most of the information is outlined in the summary and financial implications.
Okay, questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, thank you for the information in the packet and going through it. I guess the only question I would have is that, it's like, we all drive highways and we see retreads laying around the road, and you often scratch your head, because you're not in that particular field, so it's like, well, those tires must be very expensive, and it's cheaper to retread and take your chances, so to speak. So, when you look at a vehicle that you're using, and it's got a 12-year life cycle and our rotation plan, and you're at 10, if you, if you were to invest the $100,000 plus, what your life expectancy is then for that vehicle, as opposed to, like, in retreading, as opposed to having to purchase new, and whether that makes any sense or not? So, in other words, if experience has said, this kind of repair will extend that life by da-da-da-da-da, how does that push that portion of the budget out?
Yeah, essentially, you're still looking at a machine that has 7,500 hours on it, and so, we would already be looking at a replacement within a few years. And so, the $100,000 wouldn't buy us much time. It would only maybe get us, hopefully, to the replacement. And then there's, you know, maybe warranty, if we're spending all that money at Ziegler Cat, then maybe there's a warranty for that work, but not on any other part of the machine. So, what we're getting with going with the new machine is both the, obviously, newness of it, but then also, like I outlined, is we are going for the, a really good comprehensive warranty to protect the county against, yeah, any, anything that comes up in the next 7,500 hours. It's just a better overall investment of our county dollar.
Yeah, thank you.
Right now, you're renting a grader at $11,000 a month, but that's not the grader you want to buy.
It is.
It is, so you have it right now, because I was going to say, how long will it take to get a new grader?
No, this, yeah, we, the grader is in the county that we wish to purchase, we wanted to put it through its paces for a month, the operator's very pleased with it. We are going with John Deere this time around, partially because of some of the issues we've had with our fleet of Cat graders.
Okay, good clarification. Commissioner Mills?
Can you guys work on John Deere?
Yeah, this has been very vetted by our shop department, too, yeah. I don't do anything without their permission.
I meant legally.
Oh, yeah.
Have to change your outfits?
Different hats.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Sullivan?
I'd just like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the replacement John Deere grader and warranty.
I'll support, with thanks for the explanation and the information you provide for us to make a decision. Thank you.
So, we have a motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item six, we'll move over to the auditor and talk about transfer station lease-back agreement.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, this has been our long process in the transfer station project. We've, you have approved the lease agreement previously, and this is the lease back from us to the operator, North Shore Waste. We've worked on this a lot in the last few weeks with our county attorney, administrator, myself, and the bond attorney for Freiburger. And gone through many permutations, edits, and this, this is the agreement in front of you that we're, we need to be approved today. Our bond attorney advises we approve this prior to the next item, which is actually purchasing the bonds, or selling the bonds. So, yeah, it starts out with the recitals, the money, sources of money for this project, it's missing one, but that's fine, it's just recitals, the $450,000 grant from IRRB. It's just recitals, the $450,000 grant from IRRB. And then, into the details of the, of the lease term, 20 years. And then, being renewed and so forth. I think I'm going to leave it to questions. It's 37 pages and I don't want to describe all of them. So, we'll leave it to questions or anything that Dustin would like to add.
And Dustin Hansen has joined us, who is the operator and guru of this new project.
Yeah, he's the owner of North Shore Waste and will be signing the agreement.
I would just add that it was more complicated than I thought because of the requirements of bonding to the, the different things that had to be in there. Made this a longer, a more complicated agreement than I think what any of us anticipated. That's why the bond attorneys were pretty helpful in this.
Key, key to this, it's.
Dustin, do you have any comments or questions?
I really don't have any comments. I've, I've reviewed it. We've gone, we've kind of gone round and round over the last couple of months with this document, so.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, documents like this are always challenging. If you deal with them every day, which like our bond attorneys, whatever, that are familiar with it, we rely heavily on their expertise and, but I've always maintained that, that agreements at the time that you negotiate, that is the respectable time to make sure you get things right so that there aren't surprises by any party following. And when you look at the detail, the language, the words that are chosen to be used here, I highlighted some things that I was looking at that if I were in that discussion and drafting this, these are things that I would, I would want to make sure that both parties are clear on. So, assuming that, having gone through all of this, that, that you're comfortable with the language and we're comfortable with the language as being recommended, then for us as a board to approve. So, everything that stayed in the, in there, heading into it and during the operation and all of the particulars based upon the unknown and if we move out of the agreement, whatever, everything that's stated in here, you're, you're comfortable with.
I am, yeah. We had to make some changes over the course of this process based on, you know, regulations for bonding money and things like that. So, I think the way that we all had thought of it three, four, or five months ago, it's a little different today than it is, than it was back then. But due to regulations, I think our, we had to make those changes. You know, our hands got tied a little bit more than we wanted, but I am okay with that.
There's usually reasons why those, you know, statutes or requirements are in place and it's, again, it's, it's just going through the process is important that we're aware of that and that all the parties, parties that have stakeholder in this are comfortable with that so that it's not a surprise in saying we didn't, we weren't aware of it.
Right.
But compliance, obviously, is our responsibility unless we want to change the laws.
Right.
But, yeah, from my standpoint, it's just making sure we're all comfortable. We feel that it's, it's a good gentleman's agreement, so.
Yes, I think we also have the attorney who has looked this all over, too, so we have questions on her.
Both. Yeah, both. Jean provided many comments that then we worked through with the bond attorney, who had many suggestions and, and Dustin also, so.
Yeah, I, I read through it and don't have any suggestions or concerns. And I'd like to make a motion to approve the lease for Solid Waste Facility between Cook County and North Shore Waste.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. On page 271, on point 10.2, the, the insurance, when we're looking at this as part of our funding and everything else, how were costs for insurance that the county is responsible for relative to billing, how were they figured as to where that would come from and where we would allocate those dollars, if that makes sense? In other words, when we're looking at our costs overall on this, we're mindful that we're going to have to purchase insurance and so, where would those monies come from? This is, at 10.2, it's just the fire, you know, and it's, the property insurance is on the part of the tenant, but the insurance that we cover on the building, it just, where were those funds coming from?
That'll come from operations, but the fees that we've put into place were designed to cover some additional costs and I expect they, and you have the, you can change those costs, too, as needed, so.
Okay.
If they're needed for some, if it is that substantial.
And I bring it up just from the standpoint of counting the cost and if we've got a revenue source to cover that, then, not that it's necessarily significant, but a dollar's a dollar, so, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
You sleeping better nights now, Dustin?
Not yet.
So, Dustin, just hold a minute. So, we also have the transfer station final bid package. Do we want to talk about that now or do we want to wait?
We can wait a few minutes. This is long.
Is it groundly separate or those are together?
It's separate.
The next two items are the resolutions for our bond issues. And Rena, can you dial for?
Oh, I don't have his phone number.
I gave it to you by email, but I'll, I can read it to you. I know, you're, you're busy listening to what was going on in the meeting.
You sent it, I didn't know we were calling him.
Yeah, on that, on the intercom.
Sure, let me pull up your email.
Oh, can you do it?
Yes.
651, yeah.
697.
697. Bruce is waiting there. 8572. Yeah, sorry.
Jenny, eat it.
Hi, Bruce.
Good morning.
We are.
Hi, everyone.
We are on to the resolutions for the two bond issues, for the solid waste revenue bonds and the jail bonds. And I've told the board that you'll describe taking the bid and the best results and, and how that all works from here on.
This is Bruce Kimmel.
Very good.
Representing ours. Yes, go ahead, Bruce.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Bruce Kimmel of Ellers. I saw on your agenda that you have the 2025B solid waste bonds first, so why don't I just give a brief overview of that one first and then you can either take up the resolution and, and I can then move on to the A-bonds or we could do both reports. What would be your preference?
Brady, what do you think?
I don't see any reason not to do them simultaneously unless any of the board have any, you know, particular questions, but.
Great, and I will go through both reports if that's okay with the board. So, let's again, start with the B-bonds in the amount of $6.2 million. As you recall, that this was for the construction of solid waste facilities, including the new transfer station. We were able to obtain the Minnesota credit rating enhancement or credit enhancement, which resulted in a AAA rating on the bonds. This county's underlying rating was affirmed at AA and really with flying colors. You're, you're doing practically everything you can at the county level in terms of budgeting and fiscal management to really just keep that AA stable and at this point, really, the only limitations to your rating are the, basically the relatively small size of the population, tax base, and economy. But those aren't really negatives, they're just our realities, right? And, and really, SMU was very complimentary towards the county and everything that you do at the board level and that staff does to keep the county on, on a, on a solid footing. We received three bids on the county's behalf for this bond issue. I think that was maybe a little bit less than we might have otherwise expected because of the relatively long-term, the 25-year term of the bonds. But again, that wasn't a problem because all the bids were very close together, which indicates that we had three very motivated bidders. The winning bid was from Baird out of Milwaukee with a true interest cost of 4.55%. And you can see that the, even the last place bid was less than five basis points higher than that at just under 4.6%. I wanted to note also that this bond issue did receive a premium bid from Baird and so, we were able to add a little bit extra to the construction fund for these solid waste projects. We had originally been shooting to fund $5.9 million of expenses and due to the premium bid on the bond issue, we were able to, to bring in just under $6 million total of construction cost, or construction proceeds. So, just about $100,000 more that you'll be able to use toward the projects. Moving on to the next page, you can see the bid tabulation showing the, the winning bid from Baird and their syndicate of co-bidders. Baird often brings many, many other underwriting firms along with them, all of which want a piece of the action, so to speak, on this bond issue. And so, that's why all of these names are listed along with Baird. And then, on the second page, you can see the second and third place bids from TD Securities and Fidelity respectively. Just briefly, there are a couple more pages on, with the final debt service numbers. I won't go through these in much detail, but again, you can see that we are netting or the county is netting $6 million for the projects themselves. I would note, in case there's curiosity on this, that because these were deemed private activity bonds, you might recall having a public hearing to that effect about a month ago, excuse me, we had a limitation on how much cost of issuance and discount could be funded from the bond issue itself. And we surpassed that cap essentially with the amount of discount that the underwriter took, Baird took as part of their winning bid. Long story short, you can see in the sources and uses of funds that the county will need to make about a $55,000 loan to basically settle everything up. But you can then reimburse yourself for that $55,000 through the solid waste utility going forward and there's any number of ways you can do that. So, it's a little bit different because of that 2% cost of issuance limitation that we had on this particular bond issue for solid waste. But I wanted to stress that the solid waste utility will take care of that cost over the long run and these bonds really will be self-supporting. And even with that contribution of the $55,000, this was still definitely the, the best overall and lowest overall cost of financing bid for the county. Moving on then, I just wanted to note the credit rating. Again, we did include the rating report from Standard and Poor's affirming the county's AA rating and you can see their comments about that as well as assigning the AAA rating to, to the bond issue, given its eligibility for that state program. Before I move on to the jail and law enforcement center bonds, do you have any questions about this CLA report for the solid waste bonds?
Any questions or comments? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, Commissioner Gamble, just asking the question relative to the private, private activity bonds and the limitation, the 2%, how often do you see that happen?
Uh, the, having a private activity bond itself?
Well, just exceeding the 2% limitation, which requires the $55,000 loan.
Right, thank you for asking that question, Commissioner Gamble. That happens very often with these, these bonds. That is not an unusual occurrence. And, you know, we could have limited the amount of discount that bidders could have taken on this bond issue, but we find that basically allowing as much playing field as we can results in better overall bids. And so, although it is a little bit of a hiccup, you know, it's still the best overall bid and, and we're confident in recommending it to the county.
All right, thank you, appreciate that.
Yep.
Any other comments, questions? I do not hear anymore, so you can move on.
All right, thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'll give a brief, similar overview of the 25A bonds, which you'll recall is to fund the expansion of the jail and law enforcement center. And on this bond issue, again, we had state credit enhancement with the AAA rating, same underlying rating, of course. And this bond issue attracted four bids with the winning bid coming from TD Securities. You may recall that they were the second place bid on the other bond issue. Because of the shorter duration at 20 years, this did have a lower interest rate of 4.27%. And even here, you can see that the bidding was pretty aggressive among all four bidders and that they all came in within 10 basis points of each other from first to last. I should note, this also had a premium bid structure that's very common with geo-tactics and bonds these days. And so, the county is netting additional funding for the jail and law enforcement center project as well. And if those additional funds aren't necessary, you can always use whatever surplus remains to pay debt service and reduce the levy impact of, of that debt service. So, it really doesn't hurt at all to have some additional proceeds. You can invest those proceeds, of course, until they're needed for the project. And then, again, if, if they're not needed, you can just put those in the debt service fund going forward.
It gives some confidence, yeah.
I should have mentioned on the previous bond issue that this bond is callable, both bonds are callable. And so, starting in February of 2035, about nine and a half years from now, you'll be able to call and refinance or pay off either or both bond issues. That's a pretty standard feature and it's fully at your discretion. There's no interest rate resets or anything like that that the bank or the underwriting firm can, can impose. It's strictly your call as to whether and when to refinance or to pay off. And then, similarly, we included the bid tabulation. You can see the winning proposal from TD Securities on the first page with the following bids from Fidelity, Baird, and Brownstone. On the second page of the bid tabulation, here, I think we were looking to net $6.25 million of funding capacity for the bot, for the jail project. You can see that we're about $190,000 more than that due to the premium that was received and a little bit lower underwriters discount that was taken by TD as part of their proposal. Debt service schedule follows and then finally, the same rating report as what I discussed. Debt service schedule follows, and then finally, the same rating report as what I discussed with you a couple of minutes ago. So with that, I would wrap up my report and congratulate you on the good ratings, the good bond sale results, and you will have proceeds within the next few weeks to be able to start paying invoices and/or reimbursing yourself for invoices paid to date. Do you have any questions for me about the A bonds or really either bond issue?
So I think the, having that premium, we haven't seen the bids yet for the jail. So we don't really have a good forecast on that, and it's, I know we can use them to make bond payments, so there'd be no, there's no issue there on use of it. But it's kind of comforting because we may need it, so.
Any questions, comments? Appreciate all your work on this from Ellers, and we always appreciate you coming up with the best than the Bonding Security Awards, which was, of course, our AAA, which is, we've been, maintained this for many, many years, so. Kudos to the past commissioners and to the present ones also. As we talk about this in our budget, and we talk about what can we do, and we've had projects on paper for many, many years, and now we have two of them that will start construction shortly, and it's a, it's a great day in Cook County, I would say.
Yeah. Ellers does a really good job of finding things. Our base rating is a double A, and then this issue, these issues got a triple A because of the state program credit enhancement that they found aware of for these particular bonds and used that and got us the AAA and the lower interest rates than even what their estimates were. So that saves us a lot of money over time, and they don't miss on those things. They're very good at this.
Well, thank you, and I'd like to return the compliment also in one area, a couple areas. Brady and Kelly and Rena did a great job of preparing for, and then talking with the rating agency, which is always a huge help in terms of getting those ratings affirmed. But then also, I know for a fact that Brady and Kelly really take an active look at investing bond proceeds for the highest possible yield, while of course, still, you know, complying with state law and having the liquidity that's needed for the projects. But, you know, in the current environment, you can earn a lot of interest on unused proceeds until they're needed for the project, and that will also be a really important area of opportunity, and I know that Brady and Kelly will seize it. So you've got a great team there, and they're wonderful to work with.
As they say, we have an A team.
I don't think, I don't think Dustin intends to give us a lot of time on the solid waste bonds, so.
And I will, I will stay on the line while you consider the resolutions, just in case there are any questions. But again, thanks for the opportunity to work with you.
Okay. Any further questions? Commissioner Gamble?
Don't have a question. Well, I do have a question. Do we want to pass these resolutions independently or together?
We can do it together. Your preference, Brady.
You can do it together.
I'd make a motion then, providing for the issuance of the sale and delivery of $6.2 million for general obligations in connection with the solid waste revenue, and also in support of providing for the issuance, sale, and delivery of $6.4 million in general obligation for the county jail.
Any further questions or comments? Okay. Commissioner Sullivan has.
I just said I'd support.
Support. Is there a second?
I made the motion. She seconded, yeah.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Bye. Okay, then, moving on for item seven, transfer station's final bid package.
So we, you may recall, we got, we did an early round of bids on some of the substantial pieces, like the precast and the steel. And we were so excited because those came in a little bit under, and we were grateful and surprised. So we enthusiastically went to the second round, and they came in higher significantly. So we sat down with, with the architect and with the construction manager at Johnson Wilson. And this is where you guys all, you Commissioners, all made a great decision to make sure that we have a construction manager, and we did the architecture administrator part of that, because they went back to those contractors and said, whoa, you gave us much bigger numbers than you did the last time we asked you when we were going, when we started this project. It's just been a few months, so let's look at this. And Dustin will go through that in more detail with you, but we went, we were like a million dollars over, and they got it significantly down. So, and they, I want to caution you that there are words that we all just cringe at, value engineering, but it doesn't mean value engineering like we came to understand value engineering to mean with the Y. This is more about getting your value out of your engineering. And so they made some changes that made sense. For instance, they had insulated garage doors in a part of the building where there was no heat. We didn't need that. You know, that can equal tens of thousands or even $100,000 to change something like that. So there were a lot of decisions like that, that, where it was kind of like premium things that really didn't need to be premium things. Another one would be moving the well closer to the building, so you don't have to dig in so much pipeline. So a lot of decisions like that were made, they made adjustments, it made substantial amounts of difference. So with that, I'm going to turn the detail over to Dustin.
Sure. And I, I don't know that I need to go through every little thing that we've been working on for the last few weeks. Like Rena said, when we put out the second bid package, not all, but the majority of the bids that came back in, came in higher than we were expecting. And some of that had to do with the fact that, you know, we were pushing so hard to get these bid packages out when all of the tariff stuff was happening. We were sending out plans that hadn't been completed yet. So all of the detail that was needed for them to accurately bid on these, these packages wasn't completed. And it wasn't, it wasn't the bidding end of it, it was the estimating end of it. So we're giving them plans that aren't completed. Hey, give us an estimate of what this would be, and we use those numbers for budgeting numbers. I think when we first sent out the 13 to 16 final packages, when we sent those out and they started coming back in, we knew that, hey, we're going to have to sit down and take a look at it. And so that's what we did. The ones that we had the majority of the issues with were electrical and mechanical. And so we had a conversation with every one of the bidders that came back that was higher. We had a Zoom call with the architect, the construction manager, and myself. And we asked them, okay, go through and see items that you think, you know, we might be able to change or maybe are over-engineered where we could save some money. They sent us back a list of changes that they had suggestions on, and we were still a half a million dollars high. And so at that time, we went through and had individual meetings with each one of them, and really started putting their feet to the fire and saying, you know, are there margin options? Are there some labor things that might be able to happen? I think you'll see in these two packages, all of the information, it gets a little confusing because all of the information is the same in both of them, but you'll see at the top there's ones that are highlighted, one that says material and one that says labor and equipment. One of the things that we battle with up here is everybody has to travel here. So the material for this project is $3.6 million. The labor for that material is almost $5.2 million, because everybody's coming up here, getting a hotel, having to stay up here, and getting paid prevailing wages on top of it. So it makes the labor end of it very expensive. And so those, those small things that Rena was explaining, you know, moving the well closer and making some of those changes, that saved us money on the material end of it, but it also saved a larger percentage on the labor end of it. So after we met with each one of these contractors individually, the conversation that I had with them was, you know, is there an opportunity to save on margin also? You know, we can cut product, we can cut material, we can cut labor by shortening things up and doing things different, but is there an opportunity for you guys to not make 20%? Could you make 15% to help us get to this budget point? So as we worked our way through, right now, I would say that we're about $180,000 to $200,000 over budget. I think that there's still an opportunity for some more savings throughout this process on a $9 million project, to be off by a couple hundred thousand. Couple hundred thousand's a lot of money, but I think that there are opportunities out there to continue to bring that number down. So what we're asking for today is, we're asking for approval to award the bid packages that we think we're not going to get much more of a savings out of. A really good example of it, if you look at the overhead doors that Rena was talking about, on the first page, it's about three quarters of the way down, it says door value engineer package. The original bid package came in at $310,963. After going through all the changes and eliminating some things, we got them down to $168,000. So, you know, we saved over 50, or almost 50% of what the original bid was versus where we're at today, and we don't think that there's any reason that we can't award that part of the package. There are still some things, I know in the agenda it says, you know, final bid packages, there are still some things that we're going to have to come back to the board and get approved, but this is where we're at today. So I guess I'll answer any questions that you guys might have, and I think Brady and Rena, who have also been really involved in this, we've been having weekly meetings for the last few weeks, talking about the budget, we can answer your questions.
Commissioner White?
Just, just since we're all post-traumatic stress from our last go-around, we are, there's, we are assured, this year, saying this for the public, that the value engineering is not going to be something we regret down the road.
I can give you some examples of some changes that we made. I can just look through this quick, I don't have anything that are specific. But our goal was to not change the structure at all. The items that Rena had used as an example, we moved the well 100 feet closer to the building. And like, I don't see any reason that that can't happen, right? That saved us $15,000. And the reason the well was in that location was strictly because that's where the civil engineers picked the spot. It wasn't like, oh, the well needs to be in this location. Moved it 100 feet closer, saved $15,000. An other example that is just on the top of my head is a propane tank for the building. You know, we can have a propane tank provided to us from Como. There's a small monthly fee on our propane bill every month. By eliminating, purchasing a propane tank versus having Como provide one for us, saved us $47,000. So we were going to spend $47,000 to buy a tank when we can have one provided. Another thing, windows. When they designed the building, you know, in the garage area, they put windows across the whole south side to get some light in the garage. It's a garage, there's trucks that are going to be stored in there full of garbage. We don't need to spend $30,000 on windows facing south to have something like trucks full of garbage.
But that's you.
I know, that view, that's, I mean, 30 feet in the air, you know? So those are the kind of, those are the kind of the changes that we made. And going through each one of the packages and making changes like that is what has realized us some savings.
Commissioner Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all the work that's been invested. When you want something, you tend to bring the energy to the table to get it, not that it doesn't get wearing, but I appreciate the stewardship of trying to be responsible for dollars and not want something to the point that you compromise what the big picture is relative to the facility and the service it provides. Practical things that can reduce money is good stewardship. You mentioned that there might be some other areas, you've taken a fine comb to it. In the bonding discussion we just had in approved, we do have the additional $100,000. I don't want that to be public information for the people that are here negotiating, but, but the fact of the matter is, is that those funds have become available to us. It also is not an indicator that we should not continue to comb through and trying to find, but just looking at it from the standpoint of saying, okay, where are we at? How are we feeling about this? Appreciate all of the diligence that's put into working to get this and to be, you know, financially responsible. Those aren't words, those are, those are hours and stress and a lot of work, but just to say it's appreciated, so.
And, you know, one, one thing that we've talked about throughout the entire process of this project is just being open and transparent and, and, you know, trying to be as forward-thinking as we can when we're talking to people about what we're trying to accomplish. And, you know, we came to the board, and we asked you guys to approve a number, you approved the number, and we appreciate that. And, you know, our goal still is to come in within that number. You know, there's some other things that we have to work with. If the total, excuse me, the total budget of the project, we're in the process of doing the Holland transfer station currently, and we don't know for sure where that budget's going to come in, but, you know, there's some opportunity for some savings there, maybe. We have the Tofti transfer station as well, there could be some opportunity for savings there. So we might not necessarily be able to get 100% of the savings just out of the Grand Murray location, but if we can save a little bit out of Holland, a little bit out of Tofti to try to cover a little bit of Grand Murray, or vice versa, I think ultimately, continuing to try to hit that budget is what I'm going to shoot for. I can't sit here and say that, you know, 100%, we're going to save the additional two or three, you know, whatever that number is that we're over currently, but I'm going to continue to fight through this process to do that, so.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work, for sure. Any other questions or comments? I'll hear a motion then. Commissioner Sullivan?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the final bid package for the transfer station facility.
Support.
Any other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dustin.
Thank you.
You. Administrator updates?
All right. Well, I, I don't have a lot of updates, but I'll really quickly go through some of the projects that we have going. Been talking about the transfer station and if, we have two active sites that have been, that have begun work on. If you get over to the Grand Marais transfer station area, you'll see that a lot of dirt is being moved around. It's, it's interesting to me, you know, having sat around and talked about this project with Dustin for nearly two years and seeing plans on paper and watching him evolve. I met him over there one day and he pointed to the different stakes in the ground and with the plans, and I was astonished at how big it is and what an amazing facility it's going to be. So, a lot of, a lot of work is happening over there, and I think we're going to see things happening very quickly over there. I also had the opportunity yesterday, because I was up in Grand Portage, to drive by the Hovland site, and a lot of work, a lot of vehicles over there. I don't know if you all in Hovland have seen it up on the North Road yet, but they, they're very close to having the area cleared and the dirt in there worked around. So, I know Dustin was heading up there yesterday to walk the area and get a measure for the fencing that's needed so he could put the bids on that. So, I think we are on schedule to see the Hovland when open sometime midsummer, really. It'll get, get going there and we'll see that happening, so that's very exciting. So, those two projects, the LEC bids, the expansion bids are due next week, so I believe on the 27th, we'll have an opportunity to see those and hopefully see those come in within the budget. So, these are tenuous times for ordering steel and precast, but we'll keep, trying to be positive about that. And if you haven't had the chance, Commissioners, to walk downstairs and see the area that's being renovated in the basement for six cubicles and two offices, it's really pretty nice. It's going to be pretty nice on there. The construction is right below where I sit, so if you're on Zoom calls with me, sometimes you can hear the sawsaws and the concrete cutters, and actually sometimes my chair vibrates. It's, you know, it's, it's a perk, I guess, but it's, but it's, it's, it's been going on, and I think they're still scheduled to get that going by the first, move people the first week of July. So, those are all going really well, and I think they're all good solutions. The LEC expansion, I think, was the right choice to address the needs current and future, and getting some additional space that was previously not used well in the basement is a very smart fiscal decision as well as, just allows us to move forward. Next week is a busy week. We have candidate interviews on Monday. We'll be interviewing four candidates, and that will begin at 8:30 in the morning, and we'll go, they'll be hour-long each with some time in between. This time, we will not be live streaming, but we will be videoing the interviews, and as soon as the interviews are done, they'll be available on our website for the public to view, or anybody else to view. I don't know who else would view them, but, and then there'll be an opportunity, just like last time, for the public to fill out a form, comment on this, that the Commissioners can use as input. The reason that we're not live streaming is really just about the integrity of the interview process, to not give somebody that's the third or fourth interview an opportunity to see other people's interviews from their car or on their phone. It's, it would be unfair to the earlier interviews. So, that was a decision we made. We got questions confirmed. I assume you all had an opportunity to weigh in on those. I saw the questions, and I thought they looked pretty good. So, that's happening on Monday. Tuesday, we have the craziest committee of the whole schedule I have ever seen in my 10, 12 years of being around here. We have the AOA and Hub coming in, visit Cook County, we have Land Services, something to do with property, and Grand Portage. I'm, I'm forgetting something else. There are quite a few things on that agenda.
Chief?
Oh, yeah, there's going to be an update on the chief, and we always know that can take a little bit of time. So, Tuesday, that, we have that going.
Bring a lunch?
Yeah, bring a lunch, bring dinner. And then also on Tuesday evening, we have the County Board of Appeals and Equalization at 6 o'clock that night. So, Tuesday will be another long day. On Wednesday at 1:30, there's a special meeting that's been advertised for you all to convene to look at input from Matt, look at input from, from the public, and discuss the interviews that you saw, and hopefully find somebody that you like well enough to extend an offer to. So, that's next week. Then we have Thursday off because it's Juneteenth. Yay!
Is that time on Wednesday changed, or is it still 1:30?
It's at 1:30.
Okay.
We changed it to 1:30 because I think some or all of the Commissioners are going to be at a district meeting in Two Harbors that morning until noon. So, go to that meeting and then come back here at 1:30 and do this. So, it's, it's a busy power pack, three days. And that's what I have for you folks today.
Commissioner White?
Administrator, if you, for the public, is the public still invited to come and hear the?
Yes.
Interviews live?
Yes, I'm sorry, I neglected to say that. Interviews, when all five Commissioners are present, are considered public meetings, and anyone can attend those on Monday. Thank you for that reminder.
There's a question. Okay, thank you, Rena, on the updating. Moving on to Commissioner Report, meeting updates, anyone? Commissioner Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. C Club recently met, and one of the things we've done, since we don't have an executive director, it's been about a year now, is we did hire someone who used to be local, but is now in Portugal, we hired Jay White to help update our website. So, that is something new that we are doing, so I would encourage you all to look at the Cook County Local Energy Project website. Firewise has met recently, and one of the things we did is the mid-trail evacuation, designing teams to go about throughout the mid-trail area, and one of the things that was interesting, as I was an observer for that event, is to look at the communications team and the ambulance team that remained at the fire hall, and then to talk about different scenarios that occurred. For example, there was someone at one of the local campgrounds who did not have transportation. There was a mother and three children, and the father had gone off with the truck. Had there been a fire, there was no way for those people to leave. And so, talking about, again, how we engage our local community in helping to evacuate people that might be visitors here. That was a scenario they talked about prior to the evacuation, but then again, it actually occurred when we did the drill. The Heights, we had the groundbreaking, Commissioner Gamble was there as well, and that was very well-attended by the community. That particular facility is going to be built with modular units, there'll be 36 of them, and will be available next fall, so we'll have more opportunities for housing. Cook County Historical Society is actively working on their budget. I believe a couple people from their finance committee are going to meet with Brady as well, but they have to look at the fact that there have been cuts to the Institute of Museum and Library Services, federal humanities grants, and National Endowment for the Arts, which are all places that they can secure funding. I attended the Shoreline Solutions Workshop, put on by Soil and Water Conservation District. They did a great job of talking to property owners along our lakes and streams about how to build riparian buffers, get rid of the, you know, mowing down to the lake, and talked about the impact of mowing. One of the statistics I remember is that mowing, and this is without any kind of fertilizer or weed control, that cutting your lawn can add one pound of phosphorus, which equals 500 pounds of algae in your lake. That really, you know, is something I can remember and was really important for property owners along our lakes to learn about. We had the Gunflint cleanup on Saturday. I haven't heard the final results of how many tons of trash was picked up, but there was a lot along the Gunflint Trail that was picked up, mufflers, tailpipes, you name it, kind of interesting. It's not just bottles and cans. The one comment many people had made was that there were so many cigarette butts, and as dry as it's been, it is unconscionable to think about people throwing a cigarette butt out into that dry grass adjacent to the Gunflint Trail. So, that was quite a discussion. And then lastly, on Sunday was Gunflint Trail Volunteer Fire Department fundraiser. They do a shrimp boil every year up at the Seagull Community Center. I haven't heard how much they earn from that fundraiser, but there were hundreds of people in attendance, and they do such an outstanding job of not only raising funds, but protecting our community and also visitors to the Gunflint Trail, so I just want to give a big shout out to that group.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Commissioner Gamble?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I would, with regard to the groundbreaking for the Heights, that it was well-attended and all the stakeholders and people that had participated in that, it really, they spoke to the fact that it was a model for financing and coming together and meeting an identified need and doing it in a very creative way. So, that, that was impressive, and I, I think, again, referring to it as, as a model, when we want something, to find out how we can be resourceful in being able to make that happen. So, that, that was good. At the extension meeting, which Commissioner Starley and I were at yesterday, there was a gentleman from the university that is a statistician that does research, and what he's looking at right now is he's looking at his research, is focused on how much wealth exists out there that will soon be transferred with our population aging and passing on without their wealth. And so, I think I'd mentioned earlier in our meeting today that for years now, consultants have encouraged organizations to set up funds and to tap into some of that wealth in order to be able to exist because of reduced funds that we're finding from normal channels. So, it would be interesting to have that individual actually do a presentation, especially to some of our organizations, just to make them aware of the potential that exists, and it comes back to telling your story. The other is the, the NACO budgeting course that I'm taking on Wednesdays has been very informative, and I'll share more specifics on that. It'll continue for the next three weeks, and counties and positions from across the country that participate, and some counties have two or three or four individuals from their staff participating. So, there's breakout sessions in which there's discussions that are held, and there was always homework to do, and so it's, it's been a good disciplined process, and I appreciate the opportunity to participate in that, so.
Commissioner Gamble, would you like to talk about Preserve the Bluff, the meeting that the two of us went to?
Sure. When we had made the motion relative to the John Sheaf property with the intent to purchase, but we couldn't purchase it as a county, I, I having made the motion, the intent was not to use taxpayer dollars to purchase property that could generate money, but it seemed that the consensus of the board, Commissioner Starley was not at that meeting, was that we wanted to preserve that land. And so, following that meeting, the next day, I had contacted Amy, who had come, formerly with the Forest Service, she's working at the Y now, and just said, if people that are in support of this want to put their money where their mouth is, then we should pull people in. And so, we, we've had three meetings, and the last meeting Commissioner Sullivan attended as well, and we've all been tasked with responsibilities to do different things, and we're exploring any possible way of trying to generate revenues, whether that would be in a partnership with a grant request from entities. We've talked some about that in that particular meeting, through legacy funds or other funds that might be there. So, the intent is try to move forward and develop a campaign, but we, for the next meeting, we'll have a flow sheet that will show potential participants that we might be able to work with to generate dollars in, in grant monies, outright purchase. That chart will provide contact information, alignment with our goal in preserving the bluff, and timelines when applications can be made. Probably the biggest challenge we're facing is the intent that it, it's not a decision what will happen come December, but Mr. Sheaf had indicated that he wanted it formalized by December, so we're trying to move forward in that regard. Part of the tasks that were distributed was Commissioner Sullivan was going to write a document that the board could review, that we would use when we're appealing to some of these organizations, that would give an overview to what it is we're trying to do so that the alignment of values would be in place, and that's been handed out, so you can take a look at it. We'll be reviewing that, the flow chart, some other marketing copy, and some imaging and things at our next meeting. Anybody's welcome to attend that.
If you are going to attend, if there are three Commissioners or more, we do have to publicly notice it.
Yeah.
So, let us know if you are going to attend.
Yeah. But otherwise, that, that group is trying to be as active as they can, given where we're at, and, and try to leave no stone unturned, so to speak, so.
When is your next meeting? I'm sorry.
The next meeting is on the 19th, was it?
Yeah.
The 19th, and it's usually held at the community center, and it's like?
3:30.
Yeah, 3:30. 3:30, and we can maybe let you know, Jenna, as far as possibility more than two Commissioners being there for that meeting. It would be good just to be aware, as Commissioners, of what's going on, the work that's being done.
And that's really why we distributed the letter today, so you can see what kind of materials we're putting together to help our citizens move forward with this.
And, and Bob in the Sessions office has been, you know, very helpful in trying to put the information together, so how we represent things is accurate relative to who owns property up on the bluff.
Thank you for working on that, appreciate it. Anybody else, any meetings to report or share? Commissioner White?
Well, we have this kind of new, although I'm new, they said they've been working on this for a year, but the Prevention Coalition, and it is a coalition of, it's our Public Health, Human Services, the school, higher education, and it is focusing on prevention of suicide and drug use by our youth. And it is, it's a pretty high-energy meetings that happen because they are working to empower the youth to be their own spokesman, to go out and to interact with not only their peers and younger, younger students, and this is more than just inside the school system, but to also then be able to speak to the greater public, that this is what we're trying to do. But the bigger part is that they will be the carriers of that information to their own peer groups, and there's an energy in this meeting that's often not in energies in other meetings, so that's, that's a good one. And then, of course, there's the Hub, where I was at yesterday, it was a budget meeting, which after two and a half hours, I had to leave, three hours I had to leave, my time was up, but they were still going strong on it, and that is an incredible, serious working group under, and they will be here next week, but one of the, what was identified was that that is like a community identified was that that is like a community center in our county, the only place for older people to gather where they can talk aloud. I mean, the library's great, but you don't have to be a member. Anybody can come in at any time while they're open hours, and they offer shelter from the storm if need be. But it's, so it, it is a pretty committed group of individuals. So those from, so I get to be part of two committees, one where they're, they're focusing high energies on our youth, and another that we're on the other end of the spectrum. And there's a lot of value in both of those.
Anyone else?
Sure. Just more of the EDA and STANTEC conversations and going through EDA budgeting. And I'm just now looking at an email we got this morning from AMC, and it sounds like things have resolved there, and the budget's going on to the governor, and there are no cuts to county program aid, which is a huge win for us. And I'm just excited that we can move on, at least on that front, from the state, the state side of things. So, but beyond that, I think, you know, EDA is probably the primary, primary update, and there's no real update there, just continued conversations, so.
Well, the National Association of Counties with the Health Committee, we're just discussing what's going to happen with Medicaid right now. We're not sure what's going to go on there, and with other health programming, and with fentanyl, and with the maybe cutback on supporting public funds to help people with that situation. So, just two hours of discussion, and we're still kind of, we don't know where things are going. Going in a circle right now, it seems. Okay, so there'll be no other committee reports, and we'll move on to upcoming meetings, and we have lots that we're all involved in. And Rena highlighted some of the meetings that we're going to be attending. And we also have the Cook County Lodging Comparison Report through March of '25. We also have correspondence from the Minnesota State Demographer through June of '25. And we now have recognition of June's staff anniversaries, which we'll start with Sean Bergman, who is Deputy Sheriff. He has been here one year. Margaret Johnson with Public Health and Human Services, one year. Anna Klobuchar with Community Center, one year. Katie Page with Public Health and Human Services, one year. Melissa Wickwire with Public Health and Services, three years. Andrew Beavers, Land Services, four years. Tyler Johnson, Land Services and Recycling, four years. Jean Peterson, Attorney, four years. Isabella Sheehan, Public Health, Human Services, six years. Kelly Berg, Auditor and Treasurer, eight years. Rachel Espy, Assessor, 11 years. Scott Beneklin, Highway Department, 17 years. And Dave Echol, Maintenance, 47 years.
A winner.
Just a kid.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for coming. And with no further business, our meeting is adjourned.